Goes off, right? Just like, turn around and race.
Oh, that's awesome.
Eighty to one, man.
Yeah, no kidding. All right, we're gonna, you guys ready?
I think so.
Yeah. We're going to call the Saint Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Order stamp for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, seeing none. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
Move. Court.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, the minutes, items A through B. Previous meeting.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, approve and file the minutes of four twenty-one, twenty-two, and the standing committee of five-five.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six, we have a proclamation for Captain.
Don Nuss, yes.
Years of service.
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve their proclamation recognizing Captain Donald Nuss for forty years of service, which is fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five days, with the Fort Gresham Fire Department. He is retiring next month.
Support.
And I'm assuming you're gonna get that to him in Georgia?
I will, yes, he's sitting there having a, a run for him in June.
Very good.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item seven, consent agendas, items A through D.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept or to approve items seven A through seven I on the consent agenda.
Report.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, reports of standing and special committees. I'll start with Mr. Van den Bosch.
Um, we've just scheduled a, uh, another public meeting for the Twenty-Six Mile Road Development that was on June twenty-ninth at six o'clock at the Marine City Lions Club. Try and get public input on the direction of that project.
Dave, you know what? Why don't you, let's, let's talk just a little bit about Twenty-Six here quick, if you don't mind. So, we are in the process, I think that all the board members know this, but for the audience, looking at the entire Twenty-Six Mile Road corridor, we had met previously with representation from China, uh, Cotterville, Casco, and Ira, as far as would they, would they, um, be interested in even looking at Twenty-Six Mile Road as the next area for potential development? So I often refer to the Magna Plant that we have down in Saint Clair, which is located on a hundred and five acres. Um, if the next Magna Plant comes today, we have nowhere to put them, period. We have turned down, turned down three billion, one point three, five hundred million in one week on our EDA, couldn't even respond to responses. Um, right now, the space, whether you like it or not, it's heavy in the, um, EV industry, battery technology, EV, that's everything that we're seeing. Uh, Magna's a great example, that plant took ten and a half months to build from start to finish, okay? These companies come in, they don't look for two years, and then they plan for two years, it's not how it works. If you have properties and it's not ready to go, um, um, you're, you're not even in consideration. The good thing that we do have is the proximity from, um, you know, Macomb County with the workforce, and really trying to pick up that kind of acres. You are, you are not going into Oakland County and finding two, three, four hundred acres. It's not happening in Macomb. You need to also, the proximity from, from the, the supply base, General Motors, Ford, Stellantis, they have re, they have requirements. Generally, it's a sixty to no more than ninety mile type of requirement, okay? So when you take a look at Saint Clair County, and the, the, when we get the responses at the EDA, the industry dictates, it's not Saint Clair County telling us, you're going here, the industry says, we need to be located in these particular areas for these particular reasons. Heard it fifty times, right? So, when you, when you sit in these meetings with the companies, Twenty-Six Mile Road corridor makes sense. Now, as far as water sewer, who can supply, who can do what, so on and so forth, we're not even close to being there. We're in the very early preliminary stages of doing a, first time in my eighteen years here on the board. We've talked about Twenty-Six, but as far as actually going out and look at zoning consistent, you know, who has what, who can do what, you know, this will be a roadmap, because, as everybody on this board also understands, when you apply for grants, whether it's road improvements, whether, whatever it may be, if you don't have, the studies are completed and the reports are done, you're not getting ten cents to, to make things happen, that's just how it works, I think people understand that, but for those in the audience. So, going through this process, and it's gonna take time, these things aren't gonna happen overnight, by any stretch. To me, this is, we're trying to plant the seed for the next five years, ten years, you know, those types of things. Cause right now, as the immediate, um, we are turning down, and it pains me being board chairman and vice chair of the EDA, that we can't, I can't even begin to tell you how much things we can't even respond to, because we don't have available land with water sewer, and so, so, and so forth. I'll kinda flip it over to you, Dave, I was just kinda giving the backdrop on that.
Yeah, and you know, for all of those reasons you just mentioned, I mean, that's why it's important for a corridor like this, you know, when you have the Marine City Corridor, uh, Marine City Highway Corridor that stretches across so many different communities, and also is, is obviously affected by what goes on in Macomb County, you know, for all of those reasons you mentioned, it's important for us to, you know, kinda take a step back and look at all of the existing sort of, uh, what's currently planned along those different communities, what's planned for the future, what, what the current situation is in terms of traffic, uh, congestion, um, you know, all the driveways that are located along the corridor, so we're looking at all those things with our planning consultant, to hopefully uh, work with all those communities that are along the corridor, to better coordinate planning for the future. So I mean, we know that growth's gonna occur, we've seen what some of the other corridors and, and other parts of Metro Detroit have sort of come to be, and so by proactively planning and kind of working at this together, uh, with the townships, with the county, we can hopefully come up with a shared vision that is something that everybody wants to see, and, you know, and put, put infrastructure where it's appropriate, and have an understanding of what, you know, the communities want, what the citizens want, and so that's why it'll be important, as Commissioner Van den Bosch mentioned, the, the public input meeting on the twenty-ninth, you know, cause we wanna basically get feedback from, from residents, we wanna understand what the business community needs down there, um, have an understanding of what the engineers are seeing in terms of traffic and, uh, you know, water and sewer, so it's really, I've kinda said before, you know, no stone left unturned.
Yeah, and we've actually met with Macomb County, met with, um, Mark Hackel, we met with Candace Miller, we met with the New Baltimore Chesterfield, Macomb Township Supervisor Viviano, they were in meetings with us. They're seeing Twenty, they're seeing Twenty-Six Mile Road for them, as their next growth area too, the same thing, you go to Macomb County, there's no, there's no space, there's spaces in your Bruce Townships of the world, and you know, that kind of stuff. But the problem you run into in those particular areas, it's the water and sewer, which, at the end of the day, the, the county is the only one that can afford to do the heavy lift on this type of stuff, I mean, water and sewer will bankrupt small communities, periods, you know, so if we're truly want to be in the, in the game, to speak, you know, of economic development, try to attract, you know, i- if we can provide good jobs right in our backyard for our residents that live in Saint Clair County, to me, that's a home run, man, you know, I mean, you know, a lot of people we know, they drive every day, they're driving, driving, well, forty percent of our people make up living outside of Saint Clair County.
And we wanna keep our kids, we want them to have a quality job that they can go to, especially the Magna jobs are, are good jobs, and we need those kind of jobs to come in and grow, and I, I'm, I'm a farmer, and I enjoy the, the rural, but I know we've got to avoid the issues that they ran into in Macomb County with Twenty-One and Twenty-Three, and Hall Road was just a mess for how many years? If we can work and get ahead of it a little bit, and plan for it.
I didn't mean to belabor Twenty, anybody got any questions for Dave on where they're at?
I got some very specific questions to do. Uh, each community that you have here, two of them are mine, Casco and Ira, and I've got some, uh, very intense phone calls on this, that they're, the one is very much against this, and tried to go to the Ira Township Meeting, and they had a sign on the doors that it was closed, but they had the meeting anyways. And.
So.
You might be aware of that, but my question is, if every master plan for every community involved does not account for this to happening as you want it to happen, do the master plans currently allow this to happen?
So, right, that's part of the study, is that we are taking into account all of what is currently in the township master plans, and at the end of this, you know, we're gonna end up with a study that's gonna have recommendations for how best to manage growth in the corridor in an appropriate way, and there's gonna be recommendations that ultimately, it's gonna be up to the local townships, whether or not they want to integrate any of those recommendations into their plans.
Right, if all aren't on board, will this still happen? Potentially, I mean, cause you want water and sewage, and the highway's gonna be expanded, and, uh, more traffic will be coming down that, that was their concern, and whatever the township.
We don't know.
So I just want you to be very clear on this, we talked to all the township officials before we even moved forward with this. Casco was seven oh, Ira was seven oh, Cotterville was seven oh, China might have been a six-one-five-two kind of stuff.
If I was on Riley Township, when I was supervisor there, I'd still wanna do the initial, cause I think you need to do your due diligence to see what this is.
No, no question, but I just want you to understand that this is the township seven oh, so if you're getting some phone calls, I, I understand that, but we did not move forward just on our own.
Understand, right.
Without.
And, but, as this goes forward, the specific questions at the master plan, this could be three to five years out, minimum, couldn't it? To get a master plan changed?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, this is gonna take time.
Could be.
I don't think anyone's under the illusion that, you know, the plan will be done and we can instantly make things happen.
And just, cause I have a little, uh, knowledge on this, on a ZBA, if a business comes in there and purchases the property with the intent of a Magna Plan or something like that, prior to having the ZBA give them a variance of the zoning for that particular parcel, whatever the business is, even if it's a gas station, the ZBA, with rare exception, can't approve a zoning change after the purchase of the property, cause now you're putting a practical hardship on the residents there, the townships, rather than the other way, you gotta practice hardship prior to purchasing the property. Once you purchase the property, you try to put that hardship that should be turned down most of the times by a ZBA.
Yeah, most of the time, I mean, and there's a process, obviously, that gets followed, I mean, it goes to the local planning commission at first, and there's certain rules for, um, you know, things like a dimensional variance where, you know, it can't be a self-created problem, and it's gotta be something that's unique to the property, and usually that's spelled out in a community zoning ordinance.
And that's why I'm asking you, so, we got people listening and everything, so you can answer some of the questions, cause I gave some very specific answers to the people that contacted me, go to your township board and, uh, ask them these, these specific questions, because the, uh, answers you're coming up with are not correct on how it's actually ha, gonna happen, if it does happen, so.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you, David.
Yep, no problem.
Um, who were you, you report out, Dave?
I think I've spent enough time.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all right.
But there's questions out there.
Yeah.
Uh, just real short, you have the forty-year, um, we have Doug Wedlin, who is our building inspector for Riley Township, he is not retiring, but we just gave him a fiftieth anniversary or party, uh, celebrating his fifty years' service for Riley, and I'm asking Riley to give me some information, so potentially we can give him a proclamation, but he is not retiring, he's making that very clear, he's eighty-two, but, uh, he does have fantastic.
Greg.
I, Neil, I, I went out to the luncheon today.
Well, Tri.
At, at Tri, and, uh, it, it was, it was well attended, there was a lot of people out there, it was, it was nice. Um, good to see a lot of the people that were out there, so, that's it.
Georgia.
Okay, so, um, I haven't brought forth any ARPA, uh, projects quite yet, I'm still doing some, some research, but I do wanna give a shout out to Dave Struck and his team, because one of my major projects is of Waterline in Birchville Township, and it would be a pretty decent chunk of my ARPA funds, but Dave, uh, was able to get three different grant applications to Sabanow's office, Peter's office, and McLean's office, uh, should that happen, we may be able to cover the entire cost, so, um, so hopefully, we just had the legislative luncheon on Monday, that went really well, so hopefully those things will move forward, um, I've been working with Andrew Beeler's office, and I think they were going to ask for maybe the entire amount, but to your point, that a water project can bankrupt a smaller community, it's only three point six million for this, which, in some of these pots of money is nothing, but to a municipality, that's going to wipe out anything, you know, should a water line break or something. Uh, the Spongy Moth, uh, flyovers happened, the planes all left a little after nine AM, they were back by twelve forty-five, and I don't know if anyone, um, on the ground, there were four planes, I believe, uh, I think they refueled once, maybe, um, but I got a lot of videos sent to me, so it, it created quite a stir, but, uh, I think they, they were able to get everything done, so weather, weather didn't pose a problem, so it is one and done. Um, and, oh, and so, on the Spongy Moth, so we, we contracted with friends of Saint Clair River, and they've done a lot, but there was an awful lot of work done by county administration as well, Jenny Posey has sent out a tremendous amount of information, GIS, IT, lots of departments that had their hands in this as well, to try and get this program set for years moving forward, so, it was a, it was a big team effort, that's all I have.
It was a perfect day for it today, it was still this morning, I mean, they could get out and go.
It's pretty cool, how close they, like, dive and go up, it's amazing. Um, for the Commission on Aging, we met, um, the end of last month, and, um, they did a presentation for us on the senior millage, um, Jenny Posey and her team have done a great job of putting materials together, um, to help just get information out about what the millage funds and how it's been used over the last couple of years, um, the impact that it has on our community, um, we're aging at a faster rate than other counties in the state, so the village is important to us, um, and God willing, we'll all be a senior someday, um, so if you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out to Jenny Posey or Christie Jones, who's the chairwoman of the Commission on Aging, um, they have materials, and, um, are willing to, to come or have someone come and, and speak to local groups, just to help educate on, on that millage.
Okay. Got an opportunity to speak at a Richmond Chamber event, um, with a bunch of elected officials, and really just kinda talked about what I had talked about at the State of the County, and highlighted those nine different projects that all happened in the last couple of years in Saint Clair County, and when you talk about them and you look back, it's pretty, pretty amazing to, to see that that happened, um, during that time. Uh, myself and, um, Commissioner Van den Bosch met with some of the, uh, city manager, uh, Marine City, um, the, we went through the Marina Project that many of you are aware of, they're going to get bids to tear that house down, Dave, here, pretty quick.
Yep.
Uh, actually Nancy Windsor came down, one of the few of us, to talk about the Marina itself, some additional development, D and R development grant opportunities and stuff, um, pretty, pretty cool stuff in Marine City down there, it's a nice fourteen-slip excess, plus you've got some additional footage there, and really gives you an opportunity down in Marine City that never existed before. That was legislative luncheon, we had that, if we of us got a chance to attend, there were, there was a lot of budgetary stuff, and there was a lot of, I don't know, wait and see kind of stuff, I mean, it just, it, it hasn't gone through their process yet, so they, there was some specific questions, and really didn't have much in a, in an answers, um, way. Tended day seven-thirty on Tuesday, Clay Township, they had, uh, public input for the, um, new township park down there, that, uh, the county acquired the property, and Nancy's group led that and facilitated some meeting, had some different, uh, ideas, they were just kinda starting to work on it, it's gonna take a little bit, but it was, um, it was fairly well attended, and a lot of good input, they're, they're very happy to be getting that. And then on Wednesday, we had a meeting with DT, uh, and their, and their head tax people, just to talk about the taxation on the new plants and everything, to make sure we're all on the same page, went very well, you know, we had obviously met with them previous and stuff, but, uh, um, they're gonna get us some stuff, and I think moving forward, we're gonna be in pretty good shape with that, so, that is my report, uh, I'm going to go to.
Jeff, can I, I'm sorry, I left something out, can I add?
Yes.
Anyone that has, uh, properties on waterfront or any floodplain properties, there are new maps that were released by FEMA that take effect July nineteenth, and there, in some areas, it, there is a significant change, there are areas along Lake Huron that the base flood elevation moved from five eighty-four to five ninety, which is, is a significant difference, um, from an insurance standpoint or mortgage standpoint, by July nineteenth, if someone wants to have something in place, or to have their house, to make sure that maybe their property has been identified as being in the flood zone, but maybe the house isn't, it, now is the time probably to get some things in place before the July nineteen changeover.
Is, where's that available?
So each municipality received a packet.
Okay.
Uh, so all of your township, now, I don't know if each municipality has someone who maintains their flood program, so I, I'm still working with one of my communities, cause I used to do that, uh, so all of the maps just get mailed with a letter that says, this takes effect July nineteenth, um, e- even if you go onto FEMA's website, you can't see the new, the new maps yet, they are only in the communities that belong to the National Flood Insurance Program, and our county, county might have the maps, countywide, I don't know, but each municipality has.
Well, see if my memory's correct, it's Aloma that you have to do on each individual property, you have to go to Washington yourself to argue that, and I think you're very familiar, Jay, but, uh, in Riley Township, when I was supervisor, they put a hundred and five pieces of property, and it, we've never had a flood there.
Right.
But now, if you have a mortgage.
Right.
And I'm just stating this, if you have a mortgage in a floodplain, and now you're putting in a floodplain, you have to have floodplain insurance.
If your mortgage company requires it.
Right, so if they expanded the areas, whether, and I've got Bell River going through all the way to Marine City, so, uh, through Casco, Columbus, and, uh, also, uh, Riley, uh, that could, uh, put a lot of expense on a lot of residents.
So you would contact, they would contact a surveyor or an engineer who could, could look at the data, and now that you've submitted it all, they can submit it online, no one actually has to go to DC, it's, some of these are coming back in twenty-four hours, but with a change coming, they say it can take up to sixty days, and the change is sixty days from today, so.
You say that the county has that information?
I don't know if the county does, I know each mi, I know each participating community received their own packet with their own map, so you may wanna reach out to your communities.
Yep, I'll call, I'll tell you this right away, and Bruce Christie, but, uh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I was just, i- is this the result of the, the attempted amendments they've been trying to make to those maps over the years?
So.
Over the last three or four, five years?
Yes, so the, there, the, there were maps from March of nineteen eighty-two.
Right.
They were updated effective May tenth of two thousand and ten, and then they started to add in like wave velocity, so, so now we actually have, uh, zones that are similar to the oceans, like the, the Great Lakes are now considered in the same category, the VE, it's called, and it, it has to do, it, it's more similar to the way in.
It's overlapping of waves driven by wind.
Correct.
That increases the potential flood capacity, it's not just the high rays of water level, it's all these components, which the interesting point is, that even if you have flood insurance and you flood due to the overlapping of wind and waves, the flood insurance doesn't cover that.
Right.
It has to be a standard.
Of, right.
Elevation rays of water for, for twenty-four or forty-eight hours, or whatever the number is.
So now with these, so new construction will have to build higher, which, at, at some point, will hopefully get the majority of these structures out of that danger zone as well, but.
Not in our lifetime.
Not in our lifetime, no, I mean, it, everything's developed, this is, these, these are great numbers and great things for vacant properties, because then people are going to build more safely and have less loss, but everything along our coastline is, is filled in, so, it's going to be very difficult, but I would reach out to your communities, have them reach out to the state, the, the state, um, National Flood Insurance Program, uh, they're pretty helpful, because this doesn't come from the state of Michigan either, this is, this is FEMA, so, um, two years ago, they did a lot of meetings, they were, they were here in Saint Clair County, they were in San Lake County, and, um, to try and give us that information, but all of a sudden, they just show up on someone's desk, and if someone hasn't worked with floodplains since two thousand and ten, it's gonna come as a big shock.
That's a, uh, did I hear your number right?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Six feet on Lake Huron, in certain areas, some, some it's not, but, yeah, it was five eighty-four since nineteen eighty-two, and it's now, it'll be five ninety as the base, your, your lowest floor can't be below five ninety, most of the ground level comes in at five eighty-eight, so it, it'll, it'll require pure construction.
And this is out of Washington, of course.
Yes.
And what happens, when I tried to address this when I was township supervisor, our senator at the time was Levin, and he said he wouldn't address it on the floor, because almost all the monies that are generated go down to the Mississippi and the plains down there, we don't get any of that money.
Right, donor state.
And that's what this is doing, it's generating additional money for FEMA with no benefit to Michigan, and our senators should be arguing against this.
So, to the flip side of that, though, if there was ever a problem, people need to be prepared too, so there, there needs to be more education, if you're gonna buy property on the water, these are things that you need to know about, and you need to make sure you have the insurance, and it covers the right thing, because there's a lot of that that happens, that there could have been losses, and people didn't know that they could seek out their, their flood insurance, so, there, there's a lot of education we need to do in Washington and with property.
Long discussion, they got the one example in Houston, the guy's house is flooded five times, and they rebuilt it four, five times.
Right.
FEMA has.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Good thanks.
If you wanna talk, there's citizens wishing to address.
I just wanna, uh, let you guys know, I, I can argue with you guys, you guys can just.
Okay.
So I can.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the citizens wishing to address the board, uh, Patrick Patterson, sixteen thirty-seven Lion Street, the BWROC invite, which is on Tuesday, five-thirty, twenty-fourth, got it in my planner already.
That's it, you just did it. I'm Patrick Patterson, Executive Director of the Blue Water Recovery and Outreach Center, this is just a friendly reminder of a private, uh, private open house next Tuesday at five-thirty for the Saint Clair County Commissioners, um, dignitaries will be there from the community to learn and understand the value and impact that our organization is having within the community, and we hope to see you there.
Yeah, I would encourage commissioners, if you can, to get there, the county is going to be receiving some opioid settlement money that has to be used for very specific programs, so if you get a chance to go over there and take a look and see, uh, see what they're doing over there. Um, Helen Hermes, road repair, Twenty-Six Mile Road.
I don't know if I address you or the road commissioners, there is a little section of road that's part of Kimball Township, but a lot of residents from Clyde have to pass over it, and it's a bummer, and so would I address it to you or the road commission to get that section fixed?
It would be a road commission issue, and if you want, at the end, I will give you the road commissioner cell number that handles that area, and you can reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. My next one is 26 mile corridor. I've traveled a lot. I've been in every state in the United States, I've been over in Europe, China, other places. And I've seen what development does when it's not done right and it's not looked at properly. It destroys the small towns. That corridor will affect St. Clair County. It can destroy it. If you look at 16 mile, I remember when Saks Fifth Avenue built their store on 16 mile. It was in the middle of a field. I drove down from the farm while I was working down here and I'd stop there and shop. Now 16 mile is solid traffic. 26 mile is still a single road until you get around Van Dyke, then it opens up. Washington Township has developed. Everything is being covered by buildings. When you lose farmland, you lose it. You don't get it back. Detroit is covered with what? And it used to be farmland. Now you have a lot of problems down there. If people want a job, don't ask for the government to give you the job or develop your job. Go to where the job is. That's what I did. I didn't ask West Branch, Ogumal County to develop something for me to have a job. I moved to the country because we want, my husband wanted to farm. I came back down here because I wanted a different type of job. So I'm not asking anyone to build something for me to have a job. I think that's wrong. You want a job, go find it where it is. When you bring work up here, you're going to destroy this lovely county. You've got plenty of stuff going for it and you can let people drive an hour for a job. I used to drive-
Ten seconds, Helen.
I used to drive three hours one way, a six-hour-round job, I mean trip. I learned during hunting season, never go up north. So what I'm saying, be very careful on this 26 mile corridor. It will destroy this county. I've never seen developers-
Please finish up.
-lose. I've never seen them lose. A developer wins and he leaves the spoils to you.
Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. No unfinished business before this evening. Going to move to new business. Item A, the approval of the county disbursements for April 2022.
This time I move to approve the April 2022 county disbursements in the amount of $13,803,42.20.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. For those of you in attendance that have not been to perhaps a county board meeting before, some of these things seem like we go through them fairly quickly. They were on our previous board meeting and they get passed on to the full board, so a lot of times questions and things like that are asked then, get information back, a lot of times from administration. So like you said, if it seems like we go through them, it's because they've been in front of us before. Item B, the contract approval request for the Congress collection.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with Congress collection for debt collection services at the jail.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item C, the contract approval request for the Harris Recording Solutions.
This time I move to approve the purchase and maintenance agreement with Harris Recording Solutions for the register of deeds in a total amount not to exceed $225,000 for a five-year term.
Support. Baldwin.
Any questions? Just a little side note here, I found something interesting. Jay, I had an opportunity to interview him the other day and we actually talked about the opportunity of when you guys are basically closed, there was you and Angie were over there, but a lot, 99% of the work, people were able to actually still get online access to register deeds, to get their documents, so on and so forth. And that was not the case in a lot of the counties. I mean, they just literally, most counties, people left and, you know, people trying to get information and any stuff. You want to touch a little bit?
Just for what it's worth, this actual piece that you're approving tonight is going to provide-
Talk into the microphone.
Is going to provide for the ability to e-file documents for the registered deeds office, which we're behind on that. But just so you're aware, I'm sure you are, but just to reiterate it, there's an automation fund fee that's charged with every filing that comes into the registered deeds office and it's specifically protected and earmarked for just these kind of expenses. You're fully aware of it, right, obviously? And so, you know, this isn't an item of, you know, we're dipping into maybe the dollars that are discretionary out of the Board of Commissioners. This is money that can only be spent for this purpose and that's to improve the technological capabilities of the registered deeds office.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item D, the contract approval request for the Kizler Police Supply.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of rifles for the Sheriff's Department from Kizler Police Supply in the amount of $125,052.06.
Support. Beeden.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item E, the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Application.
This time I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program application in the amount of $420,210.
Support.
Discussion. This is just an application. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item F.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission budget submittal for October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023 in the amount of $3,304,217.86.
Support.
Okay. Discussion. We had Mike in here last time to talk about this, did a presentation. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G, the sheriff contract for police services with Port Huron Area School District.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for law enforcement services for Port Huron Area School District for a term of 7/122 through 6/3025 in the total amount of $240,560.
Support.
Discussion. Once again, under Sheriff Spadeford, who was in two weeks ago to address this. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item H, the septic receiving station rehabilitation.
This time I move to award a contract to Vice Construction Company LLC to upgrade the septic receiving facility infrastructure at the landfill in an amount not to exceed
Support.
Eric and Matt talked to us two weeks ago about this too, made a little presentation. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item I, 2000-
Sorry.
That's all right.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 general fund budget adjustments.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item seven, Commissioner Vandembosh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan project, purchase a generator for Marine City Hall in the amount of $39,256.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item K, Commissioner Beeden, District 2.
I don't have it. I don't have it.
Someone got that?
Oh, I do. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan project for District 3 for the purchase of a generator for Mid-City Nutrition Building in the amount of $38,200.
Support.
See a big smile on Alice's face out there?
Yeah, the motion was three, so the motion was correct. It's just wrong on the agenda, but the motion is good. I thought that too, I thought that's not my district.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item L, the contract approval request for the estate of mine builders.
I would move to approve the American Rescue Plan project for the construction of a holding cell in Judge Armstrong's courtroom, awarding the install to estate of mined builders in the amount of $15,975 and installation of card readers to Dyke Security in the amount of $2,999.37.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item M, the parks manning table reclassification request.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Manning Table change, removing a part-time clerk 1 position and adding a part-time clerk 2 position.
Support.
Discussion. Got to tell you, Nancy, they did a really nice job with that whole little thing down in Clay Township the other night. I know she's getting out to a lot of the communities and looking at different needs and those types of things, so kudos to her. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item M, 2022 Marine Safety Grant Program.
This time I move to approve the fiscal year '22 Marine Safety Program grant agreement in the amount of $177,000.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item O.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the county jail COVID-19 testing reimbursement grant in the amount not to exceed $894,100.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item P.
This time I move to approve the agreement with the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County to administer the American Rescue Plan Act grant program for Commissioner, District 5.
Support.
I'm sorry, did we have a motion support?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, discussion. I'm hearing things, hearing voices over here. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Q.
I would make a motion to approve Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant application in the amount of $89,718.96 and the Michigan Drug Court Grant Program Grant application in the amount of $61,844, both for the Recovery Court for fiscal year 2023.
Support. Beeden.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item R, before we get into, I guess, that, we had talked before about when we do our little traveling roadshow thing, that it's really difficult for IT to basically to take the stuff and move it and it's labor intensive.
So some of our travel meetings, you know, certainly if we're just going to, let's say Fort Grashit or Marysville, there is significant setup required to move the equipment and have those meetings. So if we are going to do a travel schedule, it would make more sense to, you know, maybe have them a certain distance away from our normal location or if the board would like to still have them here. But my recommendation would be if we are going to truly do a travel meeting, that, you know, maybe if the location's not only three or four miles away, just because the amount of time for setup and teardown.
What we had discussed was doing, because we still want to do outreach in the communities. So we had talked about doing maybe our meetings on those travel days earlier, try to shoot for like a four o'clock meeting, so then we can actually get down to, you know, the Marysville and meet with the city council members, so on and so forth, instead of actually hauling all the stuff and trying to, just trying to make it a little bit easier. And truthfully, for meeting a little bit earlier on those days, it's easier for staff because they're already in the building, they don't have to stay over for a couple hours, so on and so forth. Is that something that the board, if we were to look at going to four o'clock on those particular days, meeting here, is that something that would fit your guys' schedule?
This is the third, just the second meeting of the month, right?
Second meeting, yeah. It's for June, July. Full board. Full board, yeah. Full board is for June, July, and August, so.
You're saying for having it here or at?
Here. We'll do them, we'll just do meetings right here.
As long as I know, I'm good anytime.
Yeah, because we still, we still would then be able to go down and meet, you know, with the other, like, I'd like to get out and get an opportunity to, you know, meet with some of the others that we really don't ever get a chance to really deal with, so.
And if we could, maybe consider September 15th. I was contacted by the YMCA and there is an event that I think historically commissioners have attended and it happens to be on September 15th and it starts at 6 o'clock. So if that was something that there were at least, I mean, we'd want to make sure that we had a forum here, but if there were more than three commissioners who attended that in the past, if we move the meeting up, then we don't have to change it to a different date. We can add September.
Yeah, we can always, so June, that's to four o'clock on June, July, August, and then September, full board?
Full board.
Yeah, does that make sense?